This conference will now be recorded.
I call toward the meeting. Your call, please.
Member Rodriguez?
Here.
Member Henigan?
Here.
Member Hutchins?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Carroll?
Here.
Chair Marsh?
Here.
And Member Kuduski is absent.
Okay. Can we stand and pledge allegiance to the
United States of America and the United Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to invite any public comment that may be appropriate for me.
Chair Brown, I wanted to just get clear what your rules are. Normally, when an application comes in for a structure, you can approve, deny, or defer. So on this type of application, I'm not sure what your plan of action could be. Is those three items still remain? Or since this is an item that only can be ultimately decided by the town commission, it's going to get referred to them anyway, or at some point. Am I correct?
Yes.
So far.
Yes, I think that's correct. We'll make a recommendation either by vote as to favoring or not approving, and then it will go to the commission.
The other thing is that I know that this segment is for general public comments. During these sections that you were discussing, will there be any opportunity for the public to ask questions at that time?
Yeah, I think we'll have some.
Yeah. One of the things that's very confusing to me, and I'm an old timer, is the definition of a lot of record, a lot of confusion about what exactly does that mean, and how does it affect any action. So that would be something that would be beneficial for the audience, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on to approval of minutes. Do we have any comments?
Is that the only public comment?
Any?
We have two sets.
Two sets.
Two sets. Are we doing them one at a time, or combined?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the October 17 minutes.
Second. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 21 minutes.
I'll second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to discussion items, number three, and it's the Land Development Code, Chapter 64 zoning, Article 1, District Regulation Section 64-1, RSF and RSE, single-family residential districts. I assume the applicants are here. Before that, sorry, Kelly. The applicants are here, I assume.
Yes.
Kelly, can you read that statement from the zoning ordinance?
Chair, if I may, just real quick, I just want to clarify for the record. The agenda actually says this is a quasi judicial item. I just looked at this yesterday, and I apologize for the late notice, but it's not quasi judicial. Since this is a text amendment, it goes before the town commission for their decision in a legislative capacity. So the decision for this board today is really a legislative advisory decision, as you mentioned, Chair, to either recommend or deny the proposed text amendment.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, Kelly, if you could just read the...
Section 64-1 RSF and RSE, single-family residential districts. A, purpose and intent. It is the intent of the town commission to introduce and maintain...
Louder, please.
It is the intent of the town commission to introduce and maintain certain elements of human scale to the proportion of single-family residential dwellings within the town. As used in this land development code, human scale refers to architectural elements of construction, such as windows, doors, entryways, ceiling heights, roofs, building envelope, and overall height, and the keeping of such elements in approximate one-to-one relationship with the scale of the human body. This is being done in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and to provide adequate light, air, and separation between the buildings. In addition, the town commission is seeking to harmonize the building character within the community by restricting the use of large and overstated or overbearing building elements.
Okay. That's a direct quote from the zoning ordinance. Okay, the applicants are here. They'd like to come up and present your case.
I read that this morning myself, just working. Yes, good morning. My name is Matthew Scott. I'm a zoning attorney. The name is going back then with an address of 14 Southeast Fourth Street in Port Portone. I'm here with my client Todd Pappas, who is a property owner in the town. As you know, this is a proposed code amendment to the RSE zoning regulations. You can go to the next slide, please. Now, before going into this specific proposal, I wanted to provide some background. Here's an aerial of what specifically the proposed code amendment would impact, and that is eight homes on the east side of Old Ocean between Anna Street and Corrine Street. You know the next slide. Here is another aerial, again, just for context, to show that there's an existing seawall along the east side that affects all those properties. And as of right now, there are these eight homes that are existing. I'm going to go into during my presentation how large those homes are right now, again, so we have an understanding of the impact of some of the code changes in the city and what's being proposed today. So you know the next slide. Now, I'm sure you're all familiar with this, because the planning and zoning board did review the code amendment in 2020, but I want to go through it a little bit, again, to sort of set the table for why we're here. So in 2020, the town brought forward a code amendment to the coastal construction regulations. You know the next slide, please. And it made a variety of changes to the code, most important of which, however, was how development would be permitted along properties that abutted the ocean. And so previously in the town, property owners that had properties on the ocean were able to take into consideration all of their property up to the meet high water line in determining their buildable lot area. And with the code amendment, among other things, the code amendment changed this and said, you can only consider for your buildable lot area, the area up to the coastal construction line. This, of course, made less sense for environmental considerations, coastal conservation. And for most of the properties in the town, it didn't have much of an impact on existing homes or what they could develop. However, on the specific properties along ocean, along Old Ocean, it had the effect of effectively taking away half of their buildable lot area, if not more. You go to the next slide, please. Now, the other thing that happened with the code amendment was it restricted any development of any kind east of the coastal construction line. So as an example, a pool, or a pergola, or a patio area would no longer be permitted. It's important to emphasize this because in going through the minutes for the city, the town commission on this, there was no discussion whatsoever of the impact to property owners along Old Ocean. Rather than, the confrontation centered on, this is a great thing for the environment, this is something we need to do for conservation purposes. And so there was never consideration of, well, are we taking away half of people's developable area? It's important that I emphasize that because we're here today, and I think because of the unintended consequences of this code amendment, clearly has valuable purposes, and is something that a lot of seaside towns are doing for conservation purposes. But it's very rare to see a code amendment that has the effect of stripping the ability of eight property owners to redevelop their homes. So you know the next slide, please. And so just here for context, this was approved in 2020, sort of during COVID. I don't remember seeing any public comment whatsoever. It was summarily approved through two readings, again, with only discussion of, this is something we're doing for the environment, this is something that we need to do to protect our coastal areas. And so you can go to the next slide, please. And so here are the existing conditions. This is an exhibit that we prepared for context. And so as you can see, that dotted line across the building, sort of, is the 1979 coastal construction line. And so there's a variety of size homes on this strip of property right now. I believe the average size right now is about 3,800 square feet, but the homes vary in size from 2,300 square feet to 7,000 square feet. So some 4,000, but again, the average is about 3,800. The other thing, as you can see, is about half, give or take, have property features that are east of the coastal construction line, right? So they're currently nonconforming. The other thing is, that's not depicted on this exhibit, is some of them have pools in the backyard, which wouldn't be permitted under current code. So you go to the next slide, please. I took something from the staff report and modified it. So Corey was kind enough to prepare this table in the staff report that sort of summarizes the impact of the coastal construction change. It's important to note throughout our discussion today that there is gross lot area and there is net lot area. Gross lot area is the entire parcel for these eight lots. And so that includes all of the area east of the coastal construction line, the area that traditionally would have been allowed to be included in your buildable lot area. The net lot area, when I make reference to that, that is the area left after this code amendment. And so you can see in the second column there, there's a drastic reduction of people's buildable lot area for these eight lots. And so what I've added on the far right side is approximate new home sizes of what can be redeveloped here. So it's sort of a big theme of our, the reason why we're here for the code amendment is, it is our view, understanding that this was not intentional. It was not intentional to take with a code amendment an entire street that has an average home size of 3,3500 to 4,000 square feet, and say, the only thing that can be redeveloped are homes that are less than 2,000 square feet. That is a drastic change. One would think, in preparing policy changes, code changes, this would have been considered or discussed, and there would have been some discussion of, well, we need to do this, this makes sense, this is what we want to do. And the record is devoid of that. So sort of our big picture argument here is, the purpose of this code amendment is to restore what these property owners could have developed for their homes or remodeled if the code amendment was not enacted, because it doesn't seem that that was an intentional effect of the code amendment. So you have the next slide, please. And so again, here, we had our architect, who's present and available to answer questions, prepare an exhibit of this unintended, my position is, this unintended impact of the code amendment. So what you see is the red line highlighted over what is the coastal construction line. And all of the homes pushed forward and drastically shrunk from what was previously permitted. There's, what you see is, on this slide, is no pools whatsoever, because there wouldn't be space, and homes that are all less than 2,000 square feet. You're the next slide, please. And so, as you may know, we arrived at this issue because my client bought a property on Old Ocean, proceeded to submit redevelopment plans, because it was a very old home, and during the development review process, town staff identified this issue with the coastal construction line. Candidly, it came as a big shock to my client, and I believe others in the town, that nothing could be built east of the coastal construction line, and nothing could be considered for development purposes east of that coastal construction line. And so in meeting with staff, we said, what do we do about this? And our initial impressions were that the town wanted to stick with the code amendment as is, that the coastal construction changes didn't want to modify the code, and that would take a very long time. And so we proceeded with variances, trying to address this issue. We also were trying to address the issue of the fact that my client's lot didn't meet current code requirements. It was smaller than is permitted. I will note that all of the lots on the east side of Old Ocean are smaller than the code requires here, and don't have as much width as the code requires. So what you have in this weird part of the town is, all eight homes are nonconforming. None of them meet code, which is a rare thing to see in modern zoning situations, that you would have an entire block of nonconformities. It's something that is generally to be discouraged when you are enacting land use and zoning rules, that they would all be zoned residential estate, and none of them would meet that code. And so we proceeded with the variances, and they were denied, and the thought was, this needs to be addressed with the code amendment. And so we started working on that. We've had multiple meetings with the town attorney, town staff, trying to figure out what might be a reasonable approach here, again, trying to restore what these property owners otherwise might have been able to redevelop if the code amendment were not enacted, because it doesn't seem like it was intentional to strip of these property owners their redevelopment potential. That seems like an odd incentive or an odd approach to take with the code change. So we proposed this code amendment to address the lot size issues and the lot width issues that all of them don't meet right now. And then we proposed some additional features to allow them some semblance of redevelopment potential. And I'm going to speak about that further, because this code amendment does not allow any of the property owners to redevelop to what they could have done prior to the 2020 code amendment. It allows something close to that. And so first and foremost, we're adding sort of like an overlay, similar to the Ocean View Special Area that has very special situated, has special conditions. We're saying for lots on this street on the east side, the minimum, the minimum lot size is 3,500 square feet instead of 20,000. This is because some of the lots are no larger than 3,500 square feet. So we wanted to bring those into a conforming status. Again, minimum lot width, the smallest lot is about 50 feet in width. So we proposed that to create a conforming situation for all the property owners. For the setbacks, my understanding was, in speaking with the town and in reviewing the area, that we needed to keep the front setback at 25 feet. So we're not changing that at all, even though, as you saw on my exhibit, the lot depth, developable areas drastically shrunk. However, we are proposing a change to the side setback of 10 feet in lieu of the traditional 15 feet, but keeping it at 15 feet for the second floor. Again, the purpose of this is, this unintended effect of the 2020 code amendment, it drastically shrunk everybody's lot. For the side corner setback, we're keeping it at 15 feet based on sort of discussion with staff and review of the block. Now, for the rear setback, the rear waterway setback area, we're proposing zero feet. This is because the property line for development purposes is that coastal construction line. So unless there's some relief provided there, quite literally, no one could develop homes, because the coastal construction line runs along the entire east side. But we're proposing to allow for minor and nonhabitable structures east of that area. This is something that's consistent with a lot of other cities that are trying to limit development east of the coastal construction line, but allowing for things like pools and pergolas, because those are not as much of a hazard or risk from a coastal consideration. And so it's sort of common to see this allowance. And so I referenced where the statute's here, because it provides a specific definition of these items. It's important that I explain this a little bit. As things stand right now, none of these property owners can install a pool on their property. It's my understanding there are some property owners on this street that are looking to install a pool. Current code wouldn't allow that. And so again, going back to my larger takeaway point here of trying to restore the rights of these property owners prior to the code amendment, I don't believe that the town intended to take away all of these property owners' abilities to have a pergola or a pool. It doesn't seem something that there was an intentional act. And so what we're proposing here is to allow for those things to be east of the coastal construction line. And so can you go to the next slide, please? Now, this part, I think, requires some explanation, because the numbers are higher than what your code contemplates for other properties. So this is sort of the second main part of our code amendment. We're proposing the maximum lot coverage to be 65% of the total lot area, where the current code in other parts of the RSE zoning allows for, I believe, 35%. And then the maximum floor area is the 82%. Now, the reason why these numbers are required at the level that they are, is that total lot area for these purposes is the net lot area. And I won't stop there, if anyone's confused about that. That's the area that's left over after stripping away all of the coastal construction line area. So the 65% and the 82% are of the reduced net. If, as I showed on the prior slide, there is no code amendment approved whatsoever, and these property owners are kept to the 36%, none of them will be able to build a home as large as what they have now. None of them will be able to build a home a quarter of the size of what they would have been able to build, build prior to the code amendment. And so while these numbers at first blush may seem high, again, the purpose of them is to restore the rights these folks would have had if the code amendment weren't approved, or if it was considered at all prior to passing that code amendment. So if you go to the next slide, please. And so again, this is in red emphasizing, the red is total lot area. So it's a 65% and an 82% of what's left over. It is not 65, 82% of that gross lot area. So in running the math, which I'm happy to speak, run through, this would allow these property owners to build homes 10, 20, 30% smaller than what they may have built prior to the code amendment. So prior to the code amendment, there was no one saying, these homes are too big, we need to restrict their development rights. That was not a discussion item. And so it's my hope that the town is open to allowing for these property owners to redevelop their properties as the years pass in a way consistent with what traditionally has been allowed in the town and along this area. Again, the underlying zoning here is residential estate. It's, it's, contemplates larger homes. It contemplates homes in the 3,000 to 4,000 to 5,000 square feet, as evidenced by the fact that the average size of homes on the street are 3,500, 3,800 square feet, and one or two of the homes, one is 7,000 square feet, and another is over 5,000 square feet, right? And so that, this is not unprecedented for this area. Rather, it is sort of a jarring result that all these people would be able to develop our homes that are 1,700 square feet, give or take. And so if you go to the next slide, please. Here is a slide, again, showing what the redevelopment potential would be if the code amendment is ultimately approved. What you're seeing is all of the homes respecting the 25-foot front setback, and again, respecting the coastal construction line, which we're not here saying is not something that is valuable or should be eliminated altogether. And then allowing for some amount of pool or backyard features between the structure and the seawall. And so this is generally consistent with some of the homes that are there now, if not smaller in some situations, because this exhibit shows how it would protect the proposed setbacks and allow for the 25-foot frontage there. The other reason why I think it's important that this code amendment be ultimately approved is, as the years pass and other property owners come into redevelopment, this will allow for the street to create more space by requiring the 25-foot setback in the front. Some of the homes don't meet that 25-foot setback. If there's no relief provided here, if nothing is changed, there is zero incentive for the people that have these nonconforming conditions, encroaching on the front setback, having some features that actually exceed the front property line in some situations, to ever make a change. Because if they make a change, they lose their nonconforming status. And so part of the reasoning for this code amendment, other than my client's goal is of being able to redevelop their property, is to encourage better development over the years along this street, because what I've heard from the town is, there are some concerns about access on the street. There's some, there's concerns about some of the existing development configurations. If nothing is done here, those property owners will never make a change unless their property is literally torn down by a storm. They just, the incentives wouldn't make sense. And so can you go to the next slide, please? Now, while this is not quasi judicial, thank you for that, Kristi. This is legislative. You're the Planning and Zoning Commission. Your job, in my view, is to advise the town commission. And so the things that we're supposed to look at with the code amendments are, are they consistent with the comprehensive plan? And not sort of preferences, or what makes, what we think makes sense for an area, but rather, what the comprehensive plan calls for. And so there are a variety of goals, objectives, and policies that favor this code amendment. You certainly want with your zoning regulations to protect and enhance the residential character and natural environment of ocean rich. Our code amendment is showing respect for these coastal construction line changes, but fostering and encouraging, enhancing the residential character of the town. As I said a moment ago, if nothing is done here, none of these property owners will make a change to their property. None of them will improve their property over the years, because it's too risky. It's, the code doesn't allow for them to sensibly redevelop it. Similarly, Objective 6 calls for restricting development to the current number of units in the entire town. This is not changing that whatsoever. This is not calling for multifamily development, or in any way increasing the density in the town. Rather, it's trying to help and support the existing properties in the town. Now, again, the, sorry, I'm trying to read this one. If you go to the next slide, please. Another objective here, Objective 7, is allow without a necessary delay, the maximum amount of development consistent with their goals and objectives of the plan. The comprehensive plan is saying that we shouldn't delay people's ability to redevelop their properties or do sensible development. I don't think that this code amendment in 2020 was intended to strip people's development rights or property rights. And so this code amendment will allow people to continue to improve their properties and replace their properties as the homes age. And so if you go to the next slide, please. And then again, Objective 9 is manage future growth and development through the utilization of innovative development code regulations which implement this plan. Look, I understand that what we're asking for here is an overlay type of zoning district, very specific to this block, but this innovation is needed, because it certainly wasn't the intent to drastically remove people's development potential for an entire block in the town. And so this type of code amendment, which is not unprecedented, as I stated, there is the Ocean View Special Area, is an innovative approach. It's surgical in allowing for people to sensibly redevelopment, to redevelopment, develop consistent with what they may have done prior to the code amendment. And you go to the next slide, please. I think lastly, rather than beating to death the comprehensive plan considerations, is that this code amendment, by fostering redevelopment situations, will allow for more modern development, more hurricane-related development, will allow for more energy efficiency. Whereas, if nothing is approved, no one will make these sorts of upgrades that I believe the town wants to encourage to their properties. You have the next slide, please. And so I just want to end with an elevation of my, of the proposed home on my client's property. As you can see, it is, shows, allows for light and air on all sides. It is a drastic improvement of what is there now. It moves the building away from the street, whereas what's existing now is basically up on the street and has weird design features, because it's just so old. It also allows for multiple vehicles to be brought off the street by reconfiguring the house to allow for more parking, which is a major issue along Old Ocean. And so I've said this a few times, but I think it's important that I close, and I can just ask, that I can give an opportunity to respond to any of the comments from the neighborhood, or any of the people that are here, that the purpose of this code amendment is not to increase my client's development rights prior to a code amendment. It's not a aggressive grab to build homes that are too large for this area. Rather, the purpose of the code amendment is to restore the property rights that the property owners had on this street prior to the code amendment, when I believe that there was an unintended impact of stripping away what people would be able to develop here. So that being said, I welcome any of your questions.
Thank you. Yes, is there any public comment on this subject? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Albert Richard Gahr. I own the property of 6107 North Ocean Boulevard, excuse me, and former owner of 6103 North Ocean Boulevard, along with my wife. And just in case I go over three minutes, which I hope I will not do, my wife has lovingly offered me her three minutes as well. So I'm anticipating a rebuttal by counsel for the plaintiff. And I just want to say that in our last gathering, our last meeting, it was brought up that our vacant lot across from the subject property was, did not meet the 80-foot width criteria. We're basically a few inches less than that. We're at 70... We're basically a few inches less than that. We're at 78 and uh several inches on one side and 79 and several inches on the other side. And when you peel away the late, the layers on this matter, what you have here, and this was brought up at our last meeting, is that if we get to do our construction on the lot that doesn't meet the 80 foot criteria, then they get to do the same thing with their property. However, the reality is if they cannot do with their property, then we should not be able to do with our property. I don't have slides. I don't have overheads. I have facts and I have a history. And the history is that last year, we sat here with um members of the zoning committee, with our building inspector, and we presented our plan. We presented what we wanted to do. And uh according to the results of that meeting, we received the green light to go forward. We have always, always complied with the requests. We've made revisions to the property. At one point, they said your driveway is 24 inches too long. You need to bring it down and we did. Whatever we were asked to do, we did and we were able to move on to the next point with the objective, with the goal of getting a building permit. So realizing that, um here we are today, once again trying to um work this thing out. I'm not sure if you understand our background. We moved here in 2010. My wife and I bought the vacant lot adjacent to our home uh that year as well. And realizing that, we did our due diligence. You'll hear that again from me, due diligence. We researched the property we bought. We knew it was a buildable lot. We knew that there were no easements, there were no restrictions, there were no covenants. That's why we bought the lot. So um all I can say is if you allow this, you set a precedent and it's going to open up the door to many situations similar to this. And what I'd like to do is offer as exhibit A my survey from 6103 Ocean Boulevard, which is almost identical to the, the house that was on that property that we sold last year. Almost identical to the lot that we want to build on. And I have as exhibit B, the survey that we had performed on the lot that we'd like to do our construction. And if you look at the records, you'll see that 6102 Ocean Boulevard has the same sized lot, 79 feet and a few inches on one side and very close to that on the other. May I give this to counsel?
Or give it to staff?
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I was here, I'm Terry Brown, Harvard. I was here as well as most of you were here when the earlier code um was changed. And it, it, the applicant makes it sound, not Al, but the applicant makes it sound like the town didn't know what they were doing and they were taking away someone's rights. Well, it all goes back to one property, 6029, the old Joea House. And this whole room was full of residents when that process was going on. You remember? They were outraged by what they were trying to do on that property. That was a, a property that went back to the 30s uh and the family sold it. A couple of different owners bought it. It had previously had a little piece in the front that had been added because of a washing uh room, laundry room. But then they came in with this outrageous plan because they were able to measure from the western boundary of the property all the way down to the Atlantic Ocean. And that's how they got the floor area ratio from the seawall down to the ocean was included. And it was an outrage what was happening. And that's why the town did his proper study and came up with the code amendment for that portion of Old Ocean between Anna and Corinne. So it's not like he's painting it. The, the town didn't know what they were doing. They knew exactly what they're doing and they didn't want to cram another big house into one of those small lots on top of the uh Anastasia Ridge. That whole property is on top of a limestone ridge. And they want to put an underground garage. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Sorry, you got some.
No comment. To Ocean Bridge Planning and Zoning Commission, I have been a resident of Ocean Bridge for over 30 years. Residing at 683 Old Ocean Boulevard. I wish to make a statement in support of the proposed code amendment submitted by Todd Pappas. The eight properties on the east side of Old Ocean Boulevard are unique in nature because of their history and geographic position. Recently, we have all invested a considerable sum at our own expense to construct a seawall to protect our investment in our homes. In the last couple of years, the town of Ocean Bridge passed new regulations affecting all of our properties that took effect, that in effect took away our rights to ownership of the properties. In the event that we needed to replace the homes that are on sites, we would be unable to replace our homes in a similar size and type by restricting the setbacks in sizes for a potential new home. The application being submitted by Mr. Pappas seeks to remedy the situation and restores our rights as homeowners. Unfortunately, I will be flying out in the morning of your hearing. I'll be unable to attend person. Thank you for considering this important issue. And James, later.
Thank you. Okay, um, another comment. I would just like to say, can we get some history of this property and project, please? And I'm, I'm specific on how this process started from your client.
Yes, yes, sir. I had to. So my client, um longtime property owner in the town, identified this property for sale, um put it under contract, reached out to the town about redevelopment potential, um didn't get um any specific feedback about these coastal construction line changes, closed on the property and submitted plans to um build a home that we thought met code in all ways. The home was approximately 4,800 square feet and was under the 36% and 35%. During the development review, um town planner said, well, hold on. You don't have the, you don't meet minimum lot width, which just to clarify is not 80 feet, it's 100 feet. We can talk about that. And doesn't meet the lot area. And these new coastal construction line issues, you can't put anything east of the coastal construction line. So when I was hired, took a look at it and said, oh my gosh, this is crazy. Uh apparently you guys didn't know about this change to the code, not you, only my client and the team. Fair what we do here. And so we've been trying to work through solutions and submitted variance applications to try to address the issues. All of those were denied by the um zoning board of appeals, board of adjustment? Uh were denied. And so we now have a situation where my client um can do nothing with their property. There's no redevelopment potential.
Okay, so you've confirmed what I thought that you did a whole scheme or a scheme was done to the property prior to checking and, and referring to what the criteria currently is. Is that correct?
Yes, but there, there was not a meeting done prior to devising, uh preparing plans for redevelopment. That's correct.
So a whole scheme was done without any, I, I've, I was called to a meeting one morning when I have not seen the plans, I've cleared, saying that uh we have this project that's complete, it's ready for approval. And, but it requires five variances. And my pretty good uh first was, how did it ever get this far? You, I mean, this is a board or commission that should be reviewing land use issues. I don't know how you arrived or your client arrived at the board of adjustments with five variances. So now you're backing into this in reverse. You're creating an egregious approach to this whole thing. I think you know, this is what's called spot zoning, where you go in and you create something to benefit you know, the, the folks which violates or contradicts some of the criteria planning and zoning. And I'm not saying that you can't get some of these reliefs. I mean, I think you should have come to this board prior and then heard what our concerns may have been.
We were not allowed to do that, Mark.
Excuse me. Can you identify yourself?
Randy Stoff.
Which, we'll let him finish the book. I'm sure.
Okay, so you know, the, the thing is that I think if we had looked at it and we've heard some of the reasoning that you presented here today, there may have been some favorable response. It would have gone, and I think showing hardships, you know, reliefs through the board of adjustments that are not at the scale of what you're requesting here. I must note. I mean, you're, you're exceeding just about everything almost by death of what you would be allowed.
That's not true.
So
Excuse me.
I
Well, I'm just
Finish, because, because a few of the things you said are, require some clarification. So I'd like to just respond with you, I'm finished making your statement.
No, I'm just saying that, so you backed into this problem and now you're asking the town to really solve it. I think I'm in the business. There are issues, there are items where you can go for some relief through variances. But when you come in with this kind of steamrolling approach, I just think it's, it's egregious and I think it's, it's inappropriate. I think there are other methods that you can use to achieve what you want, but I think creating a spot zoning in a town like this is, I think, just over the top and inappropriate. But I'll, I'll, I just want to clarify for the, some of the
Well, and so it's important though that, that I clarify there. This is not spot zoning, right? And so for you to say that this is spot zoning, spot zoning is rezoning one property to a new zoning category. No, no, it's, it's a legal term bar. And so for you to say this is spot zoning isn't accurate. So it's important that you, that we be on the same page that this is not a spot zoning application. We're not seeking to rezone one property. The other thing I'll share is, the other thing I'll share is there was no mechanism, as our architect said, for us to come to you. There was no way under the code for us to come to you and ask for relief. We stopped the development view process because there were elements that were non-starters. There was not a way. So our only option was a variance at that time.
Excuse me. You came with fully complete documents to the building department in terms of a plan. There was no interaction with research or any of that to the code and to looking. So
What, what I'm saying is they weren't, that's how the process works. You submit plans, there's a development view process that reviews it. So you're I, it's just, it's a problem for there to be the suggestion that we did something improper. Our mistake was not reviewing the code. It wasn't submitting plans to the city for review. This is how you find out that there's an issue.
And I'm, I'm not saying there isn't a solution. I'm just saying the way you approached it and now coming to us uh begging or pleading for, you know, to save your, your situation is, I find that just egregious and I think it's inappropriate. There are methods by variances, you have hardships. You could come through the board of adjustments. You came, I don't know how it was approved or approached.
And I have, because you weren't even involved then.
Oh, sure. Yeah, fair enough.
So Randy, please state.
Randall Stoff, Randall Stoff Architects. Um, that's incorrect, Mark. We submitted a package that is required by the town of Ocean Ridge. It was not a complete package, but floor plans, elevations, ratios, everything that's required to get a review from the town. The, the town would not allow us to come here. We would have preferred to come here. We were mandated basically or, or not, or just do nothing and give up our lot to go for those variances. After that was turned down, I didn't like that whole procedure, but it was the only choice we had. So what you're saying, this egregious thing is simply not true. Then we worked with the town, the, the planning and zoning, the city attorney to write this code, which is obviously a benefit to the town. What I want to say, the, the, only an architect would know is the ratios given there, obviously you have to calculate the ratios differently. I mean, that's you, you, you certainly should know that. And it's not just those, by the way. It affects every single uh lot in the town, you know, you, you're, nobody's going to be able to add on, obviously. So this reduces, just so the whole board knows, this, this amendment is great for the street. First of all, first of all, all the houses are um 10 to 15 feet from the setback. This proposition pushes everything back, which is great for the street. And there's no underground garage. The, the existing driveway, as you know, is at 10 to 13, so it's way down below. You can't ramp up or anything. So this, this proposal reduces the ratio by about 4%. It brings it to 0.32. So it reduces everything and allows my client 3,800 to 3,900 square feet of by far the smallest house that would ever be built on the ocean. So this is a, a very, very good ordinance for this particular street. And only an architect can realize that. Not, not really anybody else till you start planning. So those are the questions I think, Mark, you should ask.
Well, I, I, thank you. I think the point is I'm still at the position that, you know, you've, you've created the cart before the horse here.
Well, it's really important though that we be on the same page of process and rules. Even if you think this is a terrible approach, even if you think it's egregious or we're handling it wrong, we have a right to submit a code amendment and we have a right for the review to be based on whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Even if you think it's terrible. And so it's concerning, it's concerning that, that, that your comments are you don't like the way we handle it.
I just think you
We have a right for you to review it based on, is this what the comprehensive plan prefers? Is, is this fair to these property owners? Even if you think we handled it so wrong.
I'm not saying
You said it's egregious.
Somewhere along the line, it went ahead of itself. Let me put it that way. That you, now you have, you know, if you want relief, you've got, I, I'll say this, you have reasonable hardships on that property. You could come in and appeal and see what, what hardships would be granted. You don't come in with a plan and say, these are my plans and I want these hardships. I, I'm just saying you, I know the process, as Randy said, I deal with it almost daily. But you just, you can't just come in with a finished or almost complete, let's just say for concept scheme and say, this is what we want to do. And now we want to change the ordinances to match this or to, to adapt to this. I just, it's
It's not the case. The whole project has to be designed.
So yeah, just, just so we're clear, the, the code amendment
Excuse me. It's not your turn to speak.
So it's important that we emphasize this.
Okay.
There were plans for a 4,000 something square foot home. Under the code amendment, it would be drastically reduced. What my client would be able to be built, to build there is much smaller. But the code amendment is really about potential, not about getting our prior plan built. Our prior plan are gone, uh, excuse me, our prior plans, our Packers plans you referred to, they're in the trash. They're not going to be what's proposed. This is trying to make it so this street can redevelop something that is somewhat consistent with what was previously contemplated for this area. So prior to the code amendment, homes could be built on this street for over 5,000 square feet, 6,000 square feet. This code amendment would allow for something in the range of 3,000 to 4,000 square feet.
I think we're differing with you. I said, you can design something and request relief, whether it's setback, lot coverage through the correct uh methods, which is a board of adjustment.
Which we did.
No, no, but you have to come to us first to see, get the support. That's my suggestion. And then you, you, you come in and
Is that an option? Is that the way this goes? Is we come to see if they can support something and then go get variance?
Excuse me. I'd like to make a comment before we answer that.
Okay.
Okay, accusations and assertions have been made about the, what the town did to either push the process in this direction or preclude it from going in the direction Mark is talking about. We have no town manager here to speak for what she did. Can you speak for what you did as the attorney?
Absolutely.
I would like you to do that.
Okay.
For the record, thank you.
And Mr. Gorman, can you correct me if I'm wrong? But when this application first appeared to go before this board for uh development review, the issues were caught with regard to your lot size, your lot width. There's two issues with the coastal construction control line. And they also wanted a um to keep part of the garage that encroached into the side setback. that encroached into the side setback. When those issues were discovered, is this normal procedure? The application doesn't come before you because their application does not comply with the code. So we advised them, you need to go to the Board of Adjustment if this is the development that you want, because you're going to need variances for all these issues. And if you are granted those variances, then the application can come forward to this board for development review, knowing that they've been given a variance from complying with those five issues. When it went to the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Adjustment denied it because you can't piecemeal variance request application. So they denied them all, but they denied two of the variances without prejudice. And that's both the total lot area and the lot width, which most of the properties on this area of Old Ocean are affected by, they don't satisfy that for the RSE zoning district. So those were denied without prejudice. The variance is asking for relief from the coastal construction control line, which is both determining the usable lot area and determine the setback requirement. Those were denied with prejudice. What that means is they can't come back and seek the variances, I believe, for a year under the code. Without prejudice, they could turn around the next month and resubmit for the variances that were denied without prejudice. So what then occurred was, under the town's current code, anyone can apply for a text amendment, meaning they want to amend the zoning code in some way. So the process is it comes here first for your review of any text amendment, and then it goes to the town commission based on your recommendation. So that was the process that we followed. I think what some of the issues are that we haven't addressed was the issue of a lot of record. These parcels on Old Ocean used to be jointly owned. And what happened over time, hold on a second, my allergies are cracking up. What happened over time was that the property owners went to the property appraiser's office and got a separate parcel control number, which anyone can do. Property appraiser's office will say, you should check with your local zoning official because you may not, your lot may not be buildable. But they'll give you a parcel control number. They sell those off and someone buys them without understanding that they've just bought a lot that's not buildable in this town. And that is what's happened. And that's what's happened to Mr. Papa's. What I've encouraged everybody to do is, before you buy a property, do your due diligence, ask for a zoning confirmation letter so that someone from the town who's very familiar with the code can say, you're about to buy a property that has severe restrictions on it or that, in this case, is not a legal lot of record. So that's how this kind of issue started, that it was buying it without realizing the limitations on the property, coming forward with a development plan, which apparently didn't know all the restrictions, proposing that to staff. And what we normally do is say, wait, you can't take an application forward for development review if it doesn't comply with the code. It's a non-starter. So that's why I went to the Board of Adjustment. What Mr. Gorman and I believe, the way this property is addressed in our current code and the way that it, other properties that are restricted in their lot size is the provision that's listed in Corey's backup, and I believe it, 64-3, and it talks about an overlay that allows for small lots to be redeveloped with a far of 0.45, but the maximum square footage of the building is 2,700 square feet. Now, that's what's existing in the code now. Mr. Papa's would still need to get the variance from total area and lot width. He would still have to get that. If he doesn't get those variance, then Mr. Stoff is correct. He cannot redevelop even to 2,700 square feet. So where we are right now, in my legal opinion, is that they could, if they got those two variances, redevelop to 2,700 square feet. What they're seeking is to amend the code to allow for a larger development. And I think that's really the issue and the issue for this board to look at and for the town commission to look at in terms of policy decision. Do you want to allow these houses to go forward without having to go through to get a variance and allow them to build to what they're requesting?
Well, I'll just add to that. There's also none of the property owners can build a pool or anything right now on the property, right?
But they would have to get a variance from the coastal construction control line if they want a pool beyond the 1979.
Which you are correct in your presentation. Any non-habitable structures can be encroaching.
And so it's just important, and I'll, I thank you for indulging me. I'll just wait, make one last comment. Prior to this code change in 2020, the properties on the street could build homes averaging sizes of 6,800 square feet, 5,500 square feet, 4,000 square feet, all along that range. And I showed you an exhibit that says, under the code change, none of them can build to realistically, under current code, to more than 2,000 square feet. And so that wasn't, I believe, because the minutes are devoid of any commentary about this, because there was no discussion of, we need to shrink these homes. We need to prevent people.
Could I question that comment also?
Yes.
When you say there was no discussion, are you relating only to the town commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I wasn't able to access the minutes from the planning.
To go back to planning and zoning, when we have discussed it, we have discussed those issues. Am I not correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
And so in deciding to make a big policy change like this, you would think this would have been discussed by the town commission. However, even if the planning and zoning board, in their advisory capacity, thought it was important. The fact that there was never discussion of stripping people's ability to build a pool or build a reasonably sized home for the value imposition of the lots, it seems like this is something that should be addressed with a code amendment. And so it's just important that I emphasize that because the suggestion that we're doing something untoward or improper or egregious is unfair when the code allows us to pursue a code amendment. It's not like we're trying to slide something by. And so I wanted to emphasize that.
Okay, let me, I want to open to the rest of the business.
I just have a couple of questions for the attorney for the applicant and see if he can clarify a couple, a couple of things. As I understand, the primary argument here is that a change happened in 2020 that adversely affected your client. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And when, when did your client purchase this lot?
I believe it was 2022.
So he had every opportunity to be aware of the change at the time or prior to the time of the purchase. Is that correct?
Yes. There's no debate.
So that, basically, an error of due diligence.
Yes, that's, that's a fair statement to make. Having said that, the changes to the code were not even in the single-family zoning district. They were in a separate part of the code that when you call the town and ask for questions about this, they don't even know it's there. And so I'm not pretending that there wasn't an error of due diligence. I'm not pretending that. But in digging into it, what you see is this drastic change that didn't seem intentional. It didn't seem like it was policy-driven.
Let me go to my next question. So you clarified that. What zoning district was this in prior to 2020?
RSE.
RSE, residential estate.
Correct.
Yeah. And what's the minimum lot size under?
20,000 square feet.
So this, still this property did not comply with minimums lot size before the 2020 change. Is that correct?
That's correct. And so typically, the, in other properties along this area, the town, through error of people that weren't here or otherwise, allowed for redevelopment. And so you saw some redevelopment.
But there was no obligation, according to the current code, to allow redevelopment of this property that is below the minimum size prior to the 2020 change. Is that correct?
There is, it wasn't discovered until the applications were submitted that the illegal subdivision took place. And so the understood thought was.
Whoa, 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 but he knew the size of the lot.
Correct.
And he knew the 20,000 square foot minimum.
Correct.
So the illegal separation had nothing to do with the size of his lot at the time of the purchase.
Well, other apartments on the street had been redeveloped as non-conforming lots of record. So there was a separation done 30 years ago, let's say, without anyone being aware of it, as the town attorney referenced.
But on this lot, during the period of this owner's ownership, the lot, either before or after the 2020 change, did not meet the lot size requirements, as do none of these lots, according to the table.
Correct.
None of them are 20,000 square feet.
Correct.
So I find the argument that the change of the coastal lot line is the defining change here, it's a lot more than that. There are many other things.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's, and that screams for a code amendment. Why on earth would a code have an entire block that is non-conforming? From a policy perspective, why would you even want that? Putting aside my client's mistake, that makes no sense. That is, that is not a modern effective planning principle, is to have an entire, entire street that is zoned one way and doesn't meet any of the code. And so the only way to redevelop is by some stroke of luck that someone 40 years ago separated it correctly.
But that's not been your argument. Your argument is that we made a change without, without proper consideration in 2020 that adversely affected your clients. And you're admitting here that that's not, indeed not the case. There were many other things that these lots were non-compliant on prior to that change.
So that I'm, so that I'm clear, because both can be true at once. There are issues with the non-conforming status of all the lots. They scream for a change, putting aside the code amendment in 2020. That's a fact. You are right. So those should be addressed and these coastal construction line changes should be accommodated in some way. Both are problems that scream for a code amendment. I'm not saying that it's only the mistake or the inadvertence of the code amendments of impact on the street. It's that and the non-conforming status. And I apologize if it meant that I was saying it was only one. Of course, that's incorrect.
Thank you.
David.
May I say something?
You need to put your name in record.
Todd Pappas. First of all, let me correct, not that it matters, but I purchased the property in 2021.
Okay.
Secondly, before I purchased the property and closed on it, we sent emails to the town manager asking for the ability to build. Were there any restrictions? What about the coastal construction line? There was a new seawall that went in. Could we see the permits? We did as much due diligence as we could at that time. And the response we got via email was, that's up to the state. The town has nothing to do with this. So it might not sound like a lot of due diligence, but we basically relied on council architects, the town manager's response and what is being done in Manalapan, Gulfstream, and assumed it was all the same. There was no change. Finding the 2020 code, you have to be a forensic investigator to find it. So we did everything we possibly could. Wrong, I agree, but we did reach out.
And I want you to understand as. As, as this group, we're sympathetic to the problem you have. I don't think we're sympathetic to the approach that's being taken here today to solve that problem. And there are probably solutions. I don't, I can't propose them today. But to broadly incorporate, and I understand spot zoning and everything, all the houses down a particular section that are really to accommodate the need of this one lot opens up many more possibilities than I'm particularly comfortable with, moving forward with. But, you know, we, we want you to have the ability to put a reasonable size home on your lot that conforms with reasonable variances. And I think that's the town's position.
That's what we're trying to say.
2021, and I appreciate that. When I bought this, we did as much, we got as much information as we possibly could. And trust me, half a million dollars in legal fees, architectural fees and all this, I'd like to have that half a million back. That's gone. But I do want to build the house. I do want to live in the house. I do want to live in it till I'm gone. I live down the street now. I've been here since 2008. I moved to Ocean Ridge because I love Ocean Ridge. I didn't move to Ocean Ridge so that I could fight with anyone or do anything that someone doesn't want.
And we're only neighbors.
We've been guided by, by staff, by council, by my council. We've been kind of put in this mode, and this was kind of the last basic, not, I don't want to throw anyone under the bridge, but this was basically the last recommendation that came from the town saying, this is what might work. So that's why we're here. It's not that we're trying to.
I just, thank you, sir. I just want to reiterate what Rick just said. We're here to help. I mean, if there are variances and other release can be available to you, that's what we're here. We're not trying to stop this particular application. It's the process of trying to rezone a area. That's the issue, in my mind.
Well, typically with a code amendment, the planning and zoning board is, has the power, authority to provide recommendations and suggestions. There's not a requirement that it be recommend approval or recommend denial. It's very common in this deliberative process of a code amendment, there to be feedback of what the planning and zoning board would recommend. It's not a sort of take it all or deny it approach. It's very common between planning and zoning board with a code amendment as you move forward, for there to be changes. I had one last month in Delray Beach where there was a change recommended, and that's what, from the city commission before second reading, that was incorporated.
And it's quite common, I must say, what I said earlier, that prior to going to a Board of Adjustment for relief, it's normal to come to a planning and zoning board to see what support that board or commission can give and justification for an applicant. Most cities, and you do it a lot, I'm sure, and I do it too. You go to the planning and zoning board and then you, you present your, your scheme. You make, you know, the eight criteria that you have to show for hardships. And then you go to the planning and zoning or the, the town commission or Board of Adjustment. So.
That's actually literally not what we could have done here.
Right, I know. I'm saying this may be wrong.
And I, and I was told by the town attorney that calling you guys to get your feedback, which is something I do in many cities lobbying, was inappropriate here. So what you're saying is something.
Let me stop you right there.
Okay.
I did not say it was inappropriate.
My apologies, that it was unexpected and not traditional. I don't, I don't mean to mischaracterize what you said.
No, that's not what I said. They have a policy that they're not approached by applicants. I never said that you couldn't reach out or try to reach out.
And I apologize, I misspoke, that they have a policy of not reaching out.
Correct.
So.
We have public comment every time we meet.
Yeah.
Right.
We meet once a month. We used to meet once a year. So we're here. Anyway, David, sorry. Are you finished, Rick? Or, sorry, Neil, I'm going to.
Go ahead, Dave. I'll defer.
I'd like to have a little discussion amongst all of us. There's some things in this that I think look pretty good. Setback, because I walk down the street nearly every morning.
I do too.
And things are built right out to the edge. People have got big trucks that are hanging into the street. So that part I like. And the, the thought that rolls through my head, we've got residential, single-family homes. We have residential estates. This is a prime location. They build a seawall that effectively extends out. That was done to preserve the properties. Had it not been done, they would have all slid down into the beach. Am I right? I think. So my thought is, maybe we create a different district for this area because people have property rights. And like it or not, that seawall defines the, the eastern extent of what these people have. I believe originally they owned the, the land down to the wet waterline. So I think we should be thoughtful of that and perhaps consider that we might need a separate district for this area. It's my opinion. Maybe you can shoot holes in it.
All right, let's go back to Neil and Robert. I'll go back to you. All right. You want to keep a roll on the left?
Sure. Okay. I provided everyone here with a chart that shows what the current restrictions are for building single-family residents in more than just the RSE area. And Kelly could throw that up on to the overhead. I'd appreciate it, please. She has a copy. Okay. Okay. This is just a summary. Okay. The proposed is in red. I'm not editorializing. I'm just highlighting. Okay. So we go from RSE, which is 20,000. We go to RSF, which is 10. And I will make the comment, and Dave can back me up on this. We have some places in town that we've dealt with satisfactorily in RSF that are less than 10,000 square feet. We have just the errors of the old way you surveyed. They come out to 9,980. They come out to 9,800. Okay. So technically, yes, they don't comply with the 10,000 square feet. We've got housed, single-family houses in RMM zoned areas. Okay. As long as they are allowed, comply with other intent, intended stated regulations under RSF. We, we do permit them, and those cover 7,500 square foot minimum lots. We have the ocean view area, which goes down as small as 3,250 square feet. And when you see each of those categories, you can see the setbacks that are there. You can see the FARs that are there. This has been done by predecessors of ours. This has existed for quite a long time. We don't need to be reinventing the wheel. You guys need to figure a way to see how close you come to something that we have. You're almost an overlay of ocean view. Now, ocean view is geographically a specific area of the town, but we don't have 65% maximum lot coverage anywhere. What makes this area different than someone else in the south part of town that's having to comply with 40? Okay. So somewhere in here, there's got to be an adjustment. There's got to be compromise. There's got to be something than black and white, or you coming in here and throwing hand grenades.
I just, it's a, it's a great question that there's nowhere in the town that has the 65%. It's because there's nowhere in the town that is acutely affected by this coastal construction.
Excuse me. The people in the south end of town are affected. You're not, you're no different than they are.
There are no.
Well, I'm sorry.
There, there is no, as the exhibit showed that I presented, there are no other areas where the coastal construction line cuts off more than half of the existing property. Takes over half of what they can for development. So there are, and again, you're right. Our code amendment was largely based on this ocean view concept. It was meant, there was clearly an acknowledgement once upon a time by the town.
But you're cherry picking what you want, not coming here and saying what you need and how you're impacted. We've got an explanation now, but where, where did your numbers come from? Your numbers only came from solving your equation. They didn't come from solving the town's equation.
Respectfully, the numbers were based on what could have been developed on the street prior to the code amendment. Because it's my view, and I could be wrong, that there was not a goal or an intention to drastically strip away eight people's property rights with this code amendment. So the numbers are not cherry picked. They're actually based on looking at all of the homeowners and trying to be fair. As an example, the minimum lots has 3,500 square feet. We don't need that. We can go to over 5,000 square feet. We were trying to accommodate some of the neighbors who are in a worse position than us. So again, I, I, I understand your concern. We targeted this in a surgical way, trying to say, okay, prior to this code amendment, someone could build a 6,000 square foot home. That's never going to fly. Can we get them close to 5,000? Not for my client, for other property owners on the street. And so the code amendment would allow my client to build approximately a 3,500 to 3,800 square foot home, when prior to the code amendment, they could have built a 5,000 square foot home. So it's not as aggressive or cherry picked as you think. It's trying to find a common ground. And I, and I would solicit your input on what would be a feasible approach.
That's, that's first time I've heard that.
Oh, I, I thought I made that clear, that a code amendment is common to get your input, recommendations of what these boards might support. This is not some sort of take it or leave it, or throw hand grenades, or whatever the metaphor was we were using there. We've got a real problem here that doesn't just affect my client. No disputing that there were mistakes made by my client and our team. But there's a problem that affects this whole block. Clearly, in the past, the town has accommodated areas that have issues like this. And so what would be a sensible way of addressing that? I'm not, I'm not saying we either approve it as verbatim or just give us the denial. I, I understand that there are challenges, challenges here from a town policy perspective, from a coastal construction line consideration.
I, I think you're, I think you're complying very closely to lot with setbacks and things in the ocean view area. I don't have an issue with that. I.
First I heard, I appreciate that positive feedback.
No, I'm, I'm serious. I, I mean, there is precedent for that, but there's not precedent for some of this other stuff. And I'm uncomfortable setting that policy from here without some other direction from the town commission as to how far or where we should be going. So that's where I stand today. Okay?
Thank you. And I appreciate the table. Because again, I believe your thought process approaching this is not far from ours, that we were trying to figure out a way that is somewhat consistent with what the town does. And the only reason why, I tried to emphasize this during our presentation, the only reason why those 65% and 82% numbers seem so high is because typically, there's never this issue of this net lot area, of this line arbitrarily taking 65% of someone's billable area away. And we've, I've never encountered this in my career.
We've, we've had net lot area issues with, what is, what's the new street that we just formed?
Whitney.
Whitney Way, we've had net lot area issues. Am I not correct?
That's correct.
Yes, for other environmental reasons. So the town has dealt with that before. So thank you. That's my.
I have one question about the, what we're calling ocean view, which is at the south end of town.
Correct.
And there were two big places built there that are attached. And they, I believe, went beyond what they were supposed to do. Got some kind of help on it because we didn't want them to tear them down, but they went over and beyond what they were originally authorized to do, I believe.
Yeah, you're correct. They're three-story buildings, and they used commercial and other codes to justify what they wanted to do. It's just ridiculous. Anyway, sorry. You finished, David? Robert?
I, I think this area is unique and should be treated a little bit differently. It's not a one size fits all. You know, I take a lot, looking at the, when you look at the drawings on what they actually could build now, to me seems too restrictive. And if they apply what they're proposing, seems reasonable. I mean, I guess we may not like the approach and everything else going on, but at the end of the day, to me, it seems this area is unique. And I, I think currently it's too restrictive and something should be done. I'm okay with relaxing some of the restrictions for this particular area.
Sorry.
So getting back to what I suggested earlier, could we at least ask the town commission to consider this is something, a different area, because clearly it is, and it's historic in terms of the town. It's been there for a long time. So that would be one way that we might be able to finesse this to the benefit of everybody that owns property there.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable approach, but I think the criteria by which they use to develop has got to be massaged a little bit. This is, this is taking it from the extreme, not extreme, but we need to meet somewhere in between. I think that's what, you know, Neil, you're.
Yes.
You're saying.
And that's, that's the way I feel about it. Is it?
We're not trying to deny development. It's just, it's got to be reasonable.
Yeah, and something else, that, you look at the existing layout versus the layout with what they're proposing. I mean, these, we're talking about a lot smaller footprints than what's existing. And it just, I, I think it's reasonable. I mean, that's my two cents.
I just didn't.
We, we just have to be very cautious about setting new precedents. And then there's another area that's unique, and another area that's unique, and we end up with a code that. I'd rather not have ocean view. Ocean view was a special area that was annexed in as is, and, which is different than this property, wasn't annexed in, because obviously there would have been accommodation if this had been annexed in. So there, there's, there's a difference, but I don't want us to get a code full of ocean views and, you know, whatever we're calling this. It, it can just, the next attorney that shows up before us and the next attorney shows up before us will point to this as the reason why their circumstances are special. And then that's, that's, we have to take the big view. We're very sympathetic to the, to the issues here, but we want to be cautious in, in how we move forward with it.
Yeah, my opposition, sorry. The code amendment seems a little bit, definitely precedent setting. I would much rather be able to work this through some reasonable hardships and come back to whether it's us or the board of adjustments and plead the case of why you need the hardships or why these are unreasonable confinement or restrictions on your property. I'm just still very weary of doing a blanket rezoning or overlay. That's, because it does lead to, every, every neighborhood's starting to pop up.
Yeah. One, one of the things that gives me a lot of pause on here, besides the 82% FAR, is the 50% minimum width, since two of the lots included are over 100 feet, and we don't want to then create two more 50-foot lots as a, as a result of this. We just, I couldn't support that.
There's actually not. I, we could pull the table up. I don't, this must be an error. There's not. They're all under 100 feet.
It says approximately 105 for 6019 and 6009.
There's, what?
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, I, maybe, maybe, maybe 75 feet.
Right. There'd be a formal process to say yes or no to that.
And, and a little bit of this is trying to solve everybody's problem. But your, your client's got a, almost an 80-foot wide lot. And there's two that are 55. Well, maybe we just can't accommodate the two that are 55. And that, and they're going to be nonconforming even after a change takes place. It's, you, you can't take everything down.
To the lowest.
To the lowest.
Yep.
Yeah, that's why it should be.
Bullets. But I would think from a policy perspective, you'd want to accommodate existing properties, not place them in a situation where they can never be built. I mean, from a resilient perspective.
I think that's why you have a board of adjustments and you have a.
It's an existing condition today.
You plead your case, and hardships, this has hardships, obviously.
Right, which is why we presume that the variance is to begin with.
Yeah, but I think, I think you went in there full bore, and you kind of did yourself out of the service. But I think they're reasonable requests, but, you know, not all these lots are the same in terms of area and size or dimension. So it's can't fit everybody. That's why I still prefer going individually through the board of adjustments or whatever.
And as I understand.
To give relief to the, we understand that from the owner's standpoint, they want to try to maximize, but, you know, there's a point of no return. And also by setting precedent, then it just, you know, continues to crop up some.
I think it was at our joint meeting with the town commission that a former mayor brought this up, that it would be a problem that would bite us in the rear. And it kind of has become that, and understandably so. I, I guess you're not in favor of this being a distinct area. The town's changing. And I think that many of the things, not all of them, that have been brought forward here would make that area nicer. I'm not too much on board with making the setback on the sides only 10 feet instead of the current 15, but that would be a point where you could work on it, I think. But.
What's not nice about it?
Well, you're maybe, it's going to be a bigger home, right?
It's a quaint part of town.
I love it. Right. We, we just walked there different times, I guess. You see me.
It's a unique part of town that's, you know, has some, I think, some.
Well, the only thing I would ask, because there seems to be a difference of opinion among the board on the direction to go here, and I'm, I'm making a mistake of misquoting the town attorney. I'd ask the town attorney advice on how to approach this because it was my hope coming here, that at, at worst, we'd get feedback on what might be palatable, rather than an up or down vote. And there seems, respectfully, again, I don't want to speak for anyone, to be a bit of a divide on whether there should be a recommendation of approval or denial. I would ask that there be some guidance of, because the city commission's looking for you to provide policy recommendations. And so even if it's two are against, there, there's a consensus that something should be done, I would just plead for some sort of recommendations in that regard.
Okay, well, let's wrap this up. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Excuse me? May I just make a quick comment?
Please.
Thank you. Alnar 6107 North Ocean Boulevard. I'm sympathetic to Mr. Pappas, sitting here, listening to this. I know he paid close to $6 million for that property. He's got another half a million into it with attorneys, architects. My wife and I have been there. We've done construction in the 40 years that we've been together, way up in Rhode Island, way down in Pennsylvania, and everywhere in between, New Jersey, Highland Beach, and recently Delray Beach. The house adjacent to the subject property did a gut in 2015. They stayed within the footprint. They created a beautiful home. That's just to the south, next door to the subject property. Three houses down, Mr. Joe's home, they did a gut, and they did a beautiful job making that property into a magnificent property. And the people that bought it are now selling it for 15 million. They bought it for nine. I know, this is the market we're living in. Is there a way that perhaps Mr. Pappas can do a gut on that property? Can that property be gutted and made into a, a nice place, a livable place, a place that he'd be happy with? Maybe coming out slightly towards the back, towards the east side of the property? Is that something that can be considered? Or maybe putting a dormer up for like a master bedroom on, on the second floor, but, you know, a dormer?
I think.
It's just, I'm just saying.
That's not.
I feel his pain.
That's right.
You know, I feel his pain. And Mr. Hannigan, I know a little bit about hernias, believe me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion by the commission?
Well, I think the question is, is we're almost being asked to workshop this at this point. And we, we didn't come in having done research and prepared to, to have a workshop as to a, a recommendation different than the one that's proposed. That's, that's the difficulty here. And regardless of the action we take today, I understand it's a schedule to go to town commission. Is that correct?
I don't, I'm not sure if it's scheduled, but it goes.
Correct. Going forward.
So, so we, we do not have, within our power, the ability to delay that going to the commission. All we have to do is, is make a recommendation today. Is that where we are?
Yeah. I mean, under the code, you can always, this board has the ability to defer. But I would ask the applicant, because I know this is something that they've wanted to move forward. And so in previous discussions with their attorney, I said that we can set it up so that it's heard by this board at this meeting and then goes on for first reading in March before the town commission. in March before the town commission.
And what happens, since this is just dealing with reality, if there's a commission change between the first reading and the second reading, does the, and, and there are different votes, what's the answer on that?
It would go to the commission on first reading in March. If it gets approved, then it goes to second reading. So if the commission changes, then the new commission would hear it on second reading in April.
So it could be denied in the first reading and still go to second reading?
No, it's dead.
And then, clarifying something you said earlier about the board of adjustments, and I'm not familiar with their process, but it sounds like to me that they were very close here with the board of adjustments. You had two items without prejudice, so there is the potential of this, nearly the same application, getting the variances needs through board of adjustments, is that correct?
That's correct. I, I think both boards, this board and the board of adjustment, kind of struggle with the same issues, in that there were some things that they were very sympathetic and supportive of changing and allowing a variance to, but there were other things that it just was too big of a ask that they couldn't approve it.
Yeah, and that's my recommendation. I'd rather not have this comprehensive land use change and deal with it, you know, applicant by applicant, either through the board of adjustments or this commission, where we can then look at the conditions one-on-one.
Well, I'll attempt a motion here, and my motion would be, as the board of adjustments would call it, a denial without prejudice, with the willingness of this group to, to workshop with you some of these items, but a stronger recommendation that it be taken forward to board of adjustments before coming back to us about the overlays. So that's a, but it's simply a motion to deny.
I don't think I can support allowing board of adjustments to make a decision on an overlay, so I wouldn't support that.
No, no, it's just only the items that were, as previously, you know. But I'd be happy to workshop this and try to come up with something, but we don't, we can't make adjustments to this today that the town has to live with for years to come.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So.
So you're supporting the current form in denial?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Ballot in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay also.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Any other items?